Welcome to the February 5, 2013, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Manukian and the invocation by Chaplain Al Garzalazo from Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Please join me in the salute to our nation's flag. Ready, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic of America.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are grateful to be here tonight and are reminded through this assembly that we as a city, state, and country enjoy certain religious and civil liberties. I pray that tonight you will be with our city council members, that you will bless them and guide them, as well as our city staff as they grapple with various issues and make various decisions. May the actions that are taken tonight, and not only tonight, but throughout this year of 2013, may they reflect your justice and your mercy. And so again, be with us tonight, bless every aspect of our meeting, for I ask this in your name, amen.
Mr. Clark, may we have your report?
The agenda for the February 5, 2013, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 31, 2013, on the Bolton Board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Under presentation and appointments, at 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of February 12, 2013.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for February 12, we have no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. That afternoon, to commence at 3:00 PM, we do have a City Council and Glendale Housing Authority joint meeting. Director of Community Development, this is proposed issuance of a request for proposal in partnership with the YMCA of Glendale. That afternoon as well, we have a City Council and Successor Agency meeting, and this is Director of Community Development and Community Services and Parks, bid results for the 216 South Brand Boulevard and Central Park Paseo project, and this is in connection with spec number 3461. That evening, for the City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. Director of Administrative Services Finance is regarding the destruction of certain records. Director of Libraries, Arts and Culture, acceptance of grant funds and the amount of $10,000 for literacy services. Director of Community Services and Parks, Glendale Adventist Medical Center, HVAC improvements project. Director of Public Works and General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, safety enhancements at the Grand V Avenue and Sonora Avenue at Great Railroad Crossing project. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is bid results for the Maryland Avenue Park project. Director of Community Services and Parks, bid results for the Catalina Verdugo restroom project. We have two items under action. Director of Libraries, Arts and Culture, this is the arts and cultural plan for 2013 through 2018. And lastly, Director of Administrative Services Finance, and this is our mid-year budget update. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
You, next?
Next item under 3B is acknowledgement of Clark Magnet High School teachers Dominique Evans-Bai and Alex Day Blatner for their contribution in preparing the hazard mitigation plan.
Okay, please come to the podium. We are very pleased and honored, I might add. I have two mayors' commendations to Dominique Evans-Bai and to Alex Day Blatner, and they read as follows. "In recognition of your contribution and assistance with the Level 1 Hazard Analysis, utilizing the Hazards United States, HAZUS, system. On behalf of the City of Glendale, we truly appreciate the research, project management, and analysis conducted by you and your students. Signed Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale."
Mayor, City Council, I'd like to introduce myself. I am Brandy Vinaueva, the Emergency Services Coordinator for the City of Glendale, and I would like to thank you for giving these accommodations to our two esteemed teachers from Clark Magnet High School. They've saved the city tens of thousands of dollars in assisting us with our Level 1 Hazard mitigation assessment, and moving forward, they will assist us on an ongoing basis to keep our plan updated. So, thank you for your evening.
You.
Thank you.
No, go ahead, say a few words and fill us in on what you and the students accomplished.
Thank you. The kids are really looking forward to the opportunity to continue to help the city and give back to their community and update data as it becomes available for the city as an ongoing basis for every semester as a capstone project in the geology of disasters class that Alex and I developed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, the City Council and staff comments.
Friedman?
Just wanted to mention a few events I attended. First, a really wonderful annual event called the Youth Leadership and the Future Conference, which is held by the Character and Ethics Project. This is a really wonderful program where high school students are brought together with mentors from the community, who are just various members of the community, elected officials, community leaders, business owners, really just a wide selection of people, and we spend the entire morning into the afternoon discussing ethical issues and hypothetical issues with the students. And it's a wonderful give and take, and I think it really opens the students' eyes to a lot of issues that maybe they hadn't thought of before, gray areas, really gets them thinking and gets them talking. A lot of people in the community are involved in this, too many to mention. Our city clerk, Arti Kassakian, was very involved and I believe was our moderator for the morning's event, which was some really wonderful keynote speakers, and he himself spoke. And I just want to, you know, thank all the students who attended and certainly all of the mentors from the community who gave up their morning and early afternoon to mentor the students. It was really just a wonderful, wonderful day. Secondly, I attended the grand opening for Keller Williams' new office at the Americana at Brand. It's probably one of the best-attended openings I've ever been to, or ribbon cuttings for an office. There had to have been over 100 people there. It's a beautiful office, and it's great to see a space at the Americana that hadn't been used for a while be occupied. They're on the third floor of the building that houses the parking structure.
Fourth floor.
Fourth floor, I'm sorry, thank you for the correction, fourth floor. They're hard to miss. It says Keller Williams on the door. And then lastly, I attended, along with some of my colleagues, the Coordinating Council, the Homeowners' Coordinating Council's insulation dinner, which was last night. They had a great turnout. It was wonderful to see all of the homeowners' associations represented, and I wanted to thank all of the outgoing board members and congratulate all of the incoming board members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manukian.
Yes, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was up on the mountains again over the weekend, and I had set my mind to going to the Experimental Forest up there. I didn't get there, I got close, but because of mechanical problems, but I returned. When I was talking to some individuals regarding the Experimental Forest, they told me that parts of it were burned out because of the fire. And today, I got this flyer regarding Arbor Day, so I wanted to kind of make a pitch. Arbor Day is March 5, and it's the annual observance of Arbor Day in Glendale by Glendale Beautiful. And you can donate a tree by making a tribute either in recognition of a special person or a special circumstance or a special event by donating a tree. The trees are $45 and 15-gallon cans. Usually the trees are located either in parks or library areas, but I hope that Glendale Beautiful will accept requests for planting trees in the Experimental Forest up in the Verdugos. I will make some donations for trees for up there, and I hope that the community will join me in contributing $45, 15-gallon can, 15-gallon trees to this cause. Again, Arbor Day is on March 5 by Glendale Beautiful, and if we can donate some trees to revitalize, I'll put it that way, the Experimental Forest, the Experimental Forest up in the Verdugos, that would be a really great gesture, especially when it's being done in recognition of a special person or a special achievement or an event. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Yes, the Homeowner Coordinating Council was a great event. Todd Hunt was re-elected as president, and it was very, very well-attended. Then the Experimental Forest, I didn't realize it.
Yeah, burned down parts of it.
Oh, I'm very sad to hear that. That was quite, and by experimental, I mean all of the different types of trees that they had going there, but it was a spectacular view from there, from that location. Any comments from the staff? I have a comment from Chuck.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, council members, city manager, and city staff. I'm here tonight to announce the Library Arts and Culture Department's 2013 One Book One Glendale title. This year, we're going to be reading Hector Tobar's The Barbarian Nurseries. It's a story about LA. It could only happen in LA. We have this coming up on March 14, so I'm letting you know plenty of time. I also have copies of the book here, if you'd like to read it. Mr. Tobar is a Pulitzer Prize-winning LA Times columnist, and he is going to be in conversation with Gustavo Ariano. And Gustavo's a writer for the OC Weekly, the Orange County Weekly, probably just as famous for his column called Ask a Mexican. I expect a lively conversation between these two. I think it'll be a lot of fun, it'll be witty, and they will answer questions, sign books, and hopefully bring a lot of our community together to hear about this really interesting novel.
Okay, thank you very much.
On behalf of the friends, I do have copies, if you'd like an analog copy of the book, I can throw that at you tonight. We also have, we can get you digital copies, if, digital. Anybody else up here?
Yep.
Paper? All right, anybody else?
I'll take paper. Digital.
Wow, okay.
Digital for me.
Digital for you, okay.
My wife has a, but I don't want to overdo it.
Chuck, we can...
I'll pass these over. Books there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. So that was Thursday at the Central Library, March 14. Okay, any other comments? Next, please.
Next item is a consent calendar. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Motion.
Pull the consent calendar at 5.
Second.
There is one item that actually, there's a request to pull.
Oh, I don't have any cards.
5D. That's correct, sir.
Okay, we'll pull 5D, you said?
D, as in David.
D as in David, okay. Noting that.
There was a motion by Councilmember Weaver, who seconded that. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was a card, and I thought it was for oral communication. Okay, well, let's do the vote first.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, please read it into the record.
5D is Director of Public Works and Fire Chief regarding disposition of one 1990 seagrave ladder truck. At D1 is a resolution approving transfer of the ladder truck to the Verdugo Fire Academy operated through Glendale Community College.
All right, and I do have one card, Chief Sam D. Giovanna from Glendale Community College. What's their report?
Good evening. On behalf of Dr. Jim Riggs, President of Glendale Community College, I'm here to say thank you very much. I'm Jan Swinton, I'm the Dean of Workforce Development. Through the support of the city and especially Glendale Fire Department, we have one of the top-notch fire academies recognized throughout the state. It's really a first-class operation, and a lot has to do with our leader, Chief Sam D. Giovanna.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. It's good to see you. Scott Ochoa, I've known him from Monrovia. He's got a great city manager.
About 20 years, huh?
Yeah, 20. I can't thank you enough.
Both were a lot younger, and Sam, at least, certainly hasn't aged at all.
Thank you. I'll pay you later. Thank you. What can I say? Thank you so much, Chief Scoggins, the members of the Glendale Fire Department, not just for this donation, but for the continuous support for the Verdugo Fire Academy at Glendale Community College. Without their support, we would not be in existence. I can't thank them enough. You've got a great department, and thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They thanked us before we even voted for it.
Right, do I have a motion?
I'll move 5D.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next item on the agenda is oral communications. This portion, the oral communications, is split into two portions. This portion is for three-minute community event announcements. We'll revisit the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
Okay, I have one card, Adam Cloyes.
Evening, Mayor, City Council, citizens of Glendale. I'm Adam Cloyes, an OIF veteran, speaking on behalf of Wellness Works Glendale. On Thursday, February 14, for Valentine's Day, there will be a benefit supporting the Veterans Wellness, Veterans Welcome Center at Wellness Works Glendale. We're going to have Richard Height. He'll perform the Tibetan gongs. He's performed at colleges, hospitals, and churches across the USA and Canada, and the sounds are both entertaining and healing. The time will be from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. All donations will be accepted from $14 to $140 million. Also, on Saturday, the 16th, we'll be returning to our monthly barbecue from noon to 3:30. And please, we'd like you to get the word out to all veterans and families. And then on Saturday, the 23rd, there's going to be a special evening barbecue with performer, performance by veteran singer-songwriter Jason Moon. More details to follow for that. Any questions? That's all I have.
The address?
The address, yes. It's on 540 West Broadway, which is right down the street from here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me say that Adam is a veteran of the Gulf Wars. His dad is a Vietnam vet, and they're both very active, not just at Wellness Works and the veteran community, but they also are very active and attend the Mayor's Veterans Coalition, a group that I put together a few months ago, and it's going gangbusters, as they say. They're really doing a great job, them and other members of the veterans' community. The next speaker is Efren and Anna Olivares.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members and staff. I am here as a Glendale citizen today. It was a year ago that I dealt with a situation in my home that was very difficult, the most difficult thing in my life. My wife had an accident at home, and it was followed by about six months of recuperation and therapy and all kinds of things. And I'm here because my wife has a very strong feeling, she's a nurse, about our fire department. And I can tell you today that after what I experienced, I truly feel that they saved my wife's life. And so I want to thank the fire department. I don't know the names of the particulars that came that evening, exactly a year ago today. But my wife is here with me today. She's been my wife and my lady for 36 years, and so she wanted to say a couple of words. And I'm getting emotional, I don't usually do this, but I think we need to recognize that the fact that the fire department came to our home within three and a half minutes and took care of the situation, and she ended up at USE trauma in surgery for 12 hours, saved her life. If that had not happened, she would probably not be here today. And to me, living in the city, I've been living here for almost 30 years. My kids grew up in the school system, we have a great city here, so I'm one of those that will not take many negative comments about our fire department or police department. And with that, I'm going to have my lady here. She's not used to speaking in public, so she might be a little nervous, and she did prepare some words, and I'm going to let her give her thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the staff. Like he says, I'm not used to speaking in public, so I hope you don't mind I wrote my speech, but I wrote it from my heart. My name is Anna Olivares. Today, I have a very happy and successful first-year anniversary of my survival. Last year, during the most challenging and painful, painful time of my life, your loving kindness and that of the Glendale Fire Department show the commitment to help others in need like me. I'm here to express my extreme gratitude to you, the EMT personnel, your assistance and your loving kindness helped me to keep standing and to cope with my struggle. Your fast response truly saved my life. Your help was more invaluable to me than you can know. I will continue to appreciate it for the rest of my life. Thank you for bringing health, kindness, and light into my life, my family, my two beautiful children, my husband, and my profession as a nurse. Please let me know if there is in any way I can't bring kindness and light into your lives and service the way you did for me. I wish you a healthy year, a healthy future. Thank you, Glendale. Joyous city. May the Lord bless you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Anna. Let me give a round of applause. Let me say that she is just, well, she's an operating room nurse and has also managed right emergency rooms and operating rooms, so she is a trained professional, and I'm happy that she's back, back working in her chosen profession. And, well, Mr. Olivares, we know, has served on numerous committees and very, very active in the City of Glendale. What a surprise, what a pleasant surprise. Thank you very much.
Anna, you did very good.
Yeah? Okay, next, please.
Next, on the business agenda, under action items, at 8A is Fire Chief regarding electronic patient care reporting system, EPCR, services to the fire department. At A1 is a resolution authorizing execution of a subscription agreement between Digital EMS Solutions, Inc. and the Glendale Fire Department.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, my name is Greg Fish, Battalion Chief in charge of EMS for the fire department. And we are here to request the adoption of a contract with Digital Solutions, which is an EPCR, which is a patient care report form that we have to do on every patient in the city. Whenever we go on a medical call, a PCR, Patient Care Report, is generated. And there's a requirement from the federal government that we have to be compliant electronically to produce an electronic form before the end of the year. So with that, I'd be loving to answer any questions or expound on anything you need.
Actually, just one point for the chief. One of the things that we're doing, it's, you see these forms being used on iPads, and iPads seem to be all over the place now, and they are very useful in our company inspections, and being able to have that mounted with that iPad, that paramedic team gets off that engine, and now all of that information is already digitized. And it's worth noting that the hospitals who have that federal mandate are still grappling with the type of form that they have to come up with, and there needs to be some kind of cohesive concept on their part, yet because a lot of EMS agencies are already moving in this direction, they probably will end up taking the lead from first responders like Glendale Fire Department. So it's worth noting that, once again, we're on that cutting edge of, that leading edge of technology.
So there are no standardized forms at this point, that hospitals and the first responders could use?
My understanding is that there is not a standardized form today, and they are working on it, and each hospital does things a little bit differently.
Right, right. That's interesting. Any questions?
Will there be any issues with communications if there are no standardized forms?
Well, we have two plans right now. There's Plan A, which is, there's a fax machine in every emergency department, and we will, we have the ability to fax through the iPad to a fax machine, a copy of the PCR, so that the hospital has a copy, so that they can do patient care. Worst comes to worst, and we've already tested it. We can take the iPad, stick it on a copy machine, and hit start, and it will literally copy what's on that form. So all comes to bad, we can still make a copy on a copy machine. It'll work. Thank you.
Very good, Chief.
Thank you. Mayor, move 5A, 1.
Second.
Roll call.
Members Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At M8B is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding design services for the Palmer Park Site Improvement Project. At B1 is a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Narduli Studio for preparation of construction documents and construction administration in the amount of $155,480 plus contingency of $15,550. This is a very exciting kickoff, if you will, for the much-needed improvements in Palmer Park, and also portends the additional improvements that are on their way for other parks in Glendale, particularly in the central part of the city. You'll also see from Mr. Tatabosian's presentation some of the recent successes that we've had. Emil?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor Quintero, members of the council, I'm Emil Tatabosian, Park Planning and Development Administrator. I forgot my title for a second. The item before you is the Palmer Park Project, and we're hoping that you will be awarding the contract to Narduli Studios, but before we get to that item, I'd like to bring you up to speed on Palmer Park. We have a few slide presentations for your consideration this evening. As you know, Palmer Park Project received a CDBG grant of about $725,000 during the last fiscal year. Palmer Park is in the Chevy Chase-Glendale Avenue neighborhood. If we can move to the, oh, never mind. There we go. It's located in the Chevy Chase-Glendale Avenue neighborhood, very similar to Maple Park, which is currently under design. It's heavily used and very popular in this very dense community. Palmer Park was built in 1949. It was then improved in 1961. It was expanded in 1978, and the last renovation was in 1995, almost 18 years ago. We have a long list of improvements and priorities that we have identified preliminarily at the staff level. I will get into those in detail on the upcoming slides. This slide shows the overall park site improvement plan as envisioned by staff, and what this demonstrates is that we have really taken an overall comprehensive look at the park and tried to identify every single corner of the park that may need attention and improvement. Some of the critical improvements include a new children's playground, totlot area. We will be replacing the play structure in its entirety and hopefully adding some other interactive components to the park. We're also converting the two existing half courts to a full basketball court. The small skate element will be redesigned and hopefully relocated somewhere in a more appropriate location within the park. We're hoping to address the main entrance of the park, which is currently cutting into the usable space of the park entrance. Most importantly, we're adding some exercise equipment with the hope that we will be serving our senior community as well as our teenage community, who will frequent the park during after-school hours. We will be improving the existing jogging/walking path and also paying careful attention to the existing drive-through path that PD currently uses. And most importantly, we will be preserving as much open space for free play as possible. Basically, the green space in the middle will not be impeded. There's an existing waiting pool that is very popular during the summer for birthday parties and birthday events, and we will be preserving that and renovating that to the extent that we can. Some of the improvements that will not be noticeable by the public user are going to be the most expensive components of the project, which are the replacement of the irrigation system and the lighting system. Those are the bones of the park that really need to be upgraded. Those are the bones of the park that really need to be upgraded. We also anticipate addressing the existing shelter or the shade structure over the picnic area. Again, this is heavily used and we are very interested in recapturing some of the essence of the picnic space. This demonstrates the anticipated schedule. Given that this park is heavily used during the summer months, we're hoping that we'll start construction and end construction by summer of next year. It's a pretty aggressive schedule, but we're hoping that with Narduli Studios, we can make that schedule. The next slide just currently, or pardon me, briefly touches on some of the current successes that our department has had. We are currently under construction at the Two Trails and Sports Complex. They're about 60% complete and both of them are funded through grants. A few weeks ago, you approved the Civic Auditorium Roof Replacement Project. We're hoping to go out to bid on that and start work very shortly. In a few weeks, we'll be back before you to give you an update on Maryland Park and the Vertigo Adobe bid results. Last month, we completed construction on the Brand Safety and Security, which consisted of installing the security gates at the entrance of Brand Park and the car park safety and security side improvements, again, fence and gate along the Colorado Street frontage along with some significant park improvements. And last month, we grand opened the Riverwalk Phase One and we're hoping that we'll be before you to give you an update on the Phase Two and Three in the upcoming months. And also, we completed the Central Park Project roughly about a year ago last year. That concludes my presentation and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Ms. Narduli with Narduli Studios is also with us in case you have questions for her.
Mr. Manukian.
Yes, if we can go back to the first slide.
Should I do it?
Yeah. I remember the attractiveness of this park was...
This one or the other one?
No, the first one. Was that there's the fence in the front and the police department could kind of look through the fence and that improved safety actually for police patrols and improved the line of sight. And I see that you have a number of trees in the front, some, a few large and a few smaller. Has that been vetted by the police department, whether it will impede their sight for the safety of the individuals using the park?
Councilman Manukian, that's an excellent question and this shows the existing condition. This is not what is proposed. And the reason why we are looking at the front entrance...
But the trees are not that big, though. I've been there.
This is a rendering.
Okay. So you can see straight through.
You could and we're going to be preserving that. And that's actually a critical point that every, actually, the two projects that are currently under design, we've been working extensively with the PD department, especially the folks who are the patrol unit who is most familiar with these parks. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we're hoping to, well, we are preserving the existing drive path that connects Palmer to the existing parking lot to the west. And we're hoping that by some strategic pruning, we will be improving the site views of the park.
I have a question about the exercise equipment.
Yes.
Is there a way for us to know, because we're not going to have a lot of exercise equipment, you know, it's not that big of a park, is there a way for us to be able to evaluate what exercise equipment tends to be the most popular in parks and just get those? I want to be sure that, you know, I think the popular equipment's going to be really, really popular and I want to be sure that there's no unpopular equipment.
That's, again, it's a very good question and it's sort of a trial and error. This is, we are working with a very qualified manufacturer and provider to get a better sense of the patronage that we're serving. Again, and I mentioned the senior, our senior folks as well as the teenage folks that we're trying to capture specifically during the after-school hours. And each of those age groups require a certain level or our desire, desires certain kinds of exercise equipment. Currently, we're installing about six pieces at the trail project at the sports complex and we have looked at, of course, that one is an ADA compatible trail, so most of those, many, all of those, actually five out of the six are ADA compatible. So will the senior exercise equipments at this park. We're also looking at roughly about between 9 to 11 and Maryland Park. And again, those have been vetted by the community through outreach with them, with the user groups and as well as some of the other locations where the equipment has been installed before. We're also proposing to install roughly about seven pieces at the Maple Park redesign that's coming before you in a couple of weeks. So we're in the process of learning more about these equipments and we are doing some site visits to understand what pieces serve the most, appropriate clientele. Your point is well taken.
Okay, well, I like the design. It's certainly needed. Palmer and Maple are always well subscribed with all age groups, as you mentioned, little kids, teenagers playing basketball, you name it, older seniors hanging out. So, no, I like the design and especially for the picnic area, because I know that's always super busy and I think that overhead covering looks really great, yet you certainly have a feeling of being outdoors. The design. If there's no other comments, I have a speaker's card, Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Well, every time the city takes on additional improvements and capital improvements of the parkland that it has currently, I think it's a good thing, especially when it addresses the needs of very high-density areas. This is a very nice project that you're bringing up and I commend the park department for bringing it up to you at this time. I would like to see something more with regard to these presentations and this is what I'll recommend to Mr. Ochoa, that the city has several documents that tell you about the planning. One of them is the land use element, the other one is the park and open space element. And then there are other documents that basically follow those that support it, documents from special studies that have been done concerning the inadequate amount of parkland relative to the population. And so when a project like this is brought up, it will be nice to have a five-minute review of what the intention was back in 1990 or 1996, so the year 2000, as to what were the objectives of the city with regard to the planning of parkland relative to the population. Because we have seen a significant increase in the density of the population in the downtown areas. You have created plans so that the impact fees could be addressed and expand parkland. And now it appears to me that, now that we have a few million dollars available in this fund, it is my contention that you owe it to this population where the density is to put the resources there. Last week, it was stated that, no, impossible, it's already overbuilt. I think Mr. Weaver and someone else may have stated that you have to remove buildings, apartment buildings, in order to build parkland. What an amount of nonsense that is. It has been said here multiple times. Look, there's a significant number of very large parking areas in south of the 134 that if we were to partner and if we had the funds, you could have the park in underground and have the parkland on top, areas that are up to two acres in size. There was a property that the city had south of the 134 on the ran that became basically low-income housing, but it was about two acres. That could have been parkland as well. You see, the, year after year, the same commenters are generally made, but oftentimes are not really corroborated by anything, it's just comments. I think that we need to be much more imaginative in the way that we address the shortage of parkland and that we bring here the results, you know, the, those ratios that have to do with the planning areas, the recreational planning areas that be brought up and evaluated so that for the future, in future budgets, you address those shortages in a more forthcoming way. Thank you.
The best way to bring large parks to South Glendale is to use the existing Glendale Unified School District properties. It was done at Pacific Edison and you could do it at Glendale High School, you could also do it at Roosevelt.
We did it at Cerito's.
Yeah, we also did it at Cerito's. Roosevelt is a huge site. That is the best way to bring large parks, especially for soccer, basketball, et cetera. When you take a look at Palmer Park, it's not nonsense. You actually look on Palmer and I see one, two, three, four single-family homes. We could buy those homes and move the owners out and they'd be real happy. But then when you continue to look at this map or this picture, this Google, this Google picture, what do you see? Huge multifamily complexes, one, two, three, four. And I don't think moving renters out of their homes and the investments that people have made when they purchased these properties, I don't think that's the way to go. Not only is it expensive, but I just don't think it's right. Any other comments?
Just one. My idea was nonsense. More than a decade ago, I had the same idea, build a parking structure underneath and park on top. Nothing new in that idea. It just takes a lot of money. It takes environmental documents and the fact that you're increased traffic in this area where there's single and multifamily residences surrounding it. So it's no easy task to do it. But the idea's not new on it. That's why finding new virgin land to do something on is not nonsense, it's reality. That, I'll move A-Day one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Njarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is oral communication. This will be the five-minute portion. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Tony Passarella, followed by Paige Eves.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and viewing public. I have a media presentation. Pardon?
They went after him like he was an enemy of the state.
My job was to give my management the facts, but their job was to decide what they were going to do about it.
They went after Dr. Marcus with a vengeance, a vengeance.
They fabricated a time card, claimed that I had stolen time.
And they went way over the line by destroying evidence, obstructing justice.
No fluoridation without representation. A gulp of fluoride water a day does not keep the doctors away.
Infants out, keep it out. Infants out, keep it out.
I found that fluoride has been linked to osteoporosis, birth defects, dental fluorosis, skeletal fluorosis, possibly leading to lower IQ levels and more.
Exposing a child to chemicals in the first six years of life that will harm that child's learning capability, self-control, and have effects on his brain function that are lifelong. To permit that to happen when you know it's happening and not to interfere by stopping the use of something like silicone fluoride, which makes it worse, is immoral. It is evil to harm children by poisoning them in the first six years of life, once you know you're doing it.
This is forced medication of the public because the government says so. What's next? They don't think we're happy enough, so they put some Xanax in our water supply because they're allowed to because it's the government? It's outrageous. And everyone you hear supporting this down the road is going to be someone working for the government or some industry that's supported by the government or group, they have these fancy names, but they're all supported by either the drug industry or by the government when you hear from them.
I have nothing but contempt for the health regulators in this country. We are now number 42 in the sum of the data I looked at on the infant mortality list. In other words, 41 countries at least have infants that live at a higher rate than they do in the United States. And we used to be in the top three for longevity.
I'm Dr. Yolanda White. I'm a pediatrician, so I protect the health, safety and well-being of children. And it's not just children who are affected, everyone is affected, but even affects the unborn child because fluoride can cross the placenta and it can cross the blood-brain barrier. And when it does that, it can lower IQ and even affect other neurodevelopmental outcomes. So this is very serious.
There are so many different pathways by which lead and the use of silicone fluoride harm young children. We can't get rid of all the lead in the environment very quickly, but we can easily get rid of water in the silicone fluoride in the glass the child drinks. All we have to do is at the water company, turn the knob off.
I appreciate you all watching, Matt. This is very serious. I want to read a quote to you. "Tell a big lie loud enough, often enough and long enough and the people will believe it." Adolf Hitler said that. People, we've all been duped with this one. I mean, this is one of the biggest hoaxes in world history. I didn't know it. I mean, I was using fluoride toothpaste and drinking the tap water, but the internet is the game changer. It's totally the game changer. There's people, experts, pediatricians, just like this woman, searching this stuff out. All the information is on the internet. Please, I implore you, council members and people at home, study this, research this and you're intelligent enough to come to the same conclusion I did. You only have to have a little common sense.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Paige Eves, followed by Kenneth Landon.
Good evening. I'm the pastor at the Crescenta Valley United Methodist Church. I'm part of a group of area United Methodist pastors and we'd like to add our voices to the community conversation about the gun show. From a biblical perspective, social issues tend to be framed primarily as questions of obligation rather than of individual rights. So we tend to ask questions like, what do we owe God and what do we owe our neighbor? And we are less likely to frame a question along the lines of, what do I get to do? The biblical tradition readily accepts the fact that loving one's neighbor will entail some conditions and qualifications on one's action. I know you've heard a lot of arguments, a lot of Second Amendment arguments about individual rights of citizens to own guns. But the city council is charged to care for community concerns, our obligations to one another as neighbors. So this opportunity for the city to disengage from its part in the promotion of gun ownership is also an opportunity to shape our neighborhood culture into a more healthy and creative one. We don't have to be victims of our national culture, we have the power to influence it. So other clergy friends, Methodist and others in the neighborhood will be so supportive of the council and a conscious choice to use city property for events that nurture growth and education and the welfare of our community. And we would invite Mayor Quintero to sign on to the Mayors Against Illegal Guns Initiative to join with 800 other mayors across the country to encourage more background checks, limit sales of assault rifles and ammunition and whatever other national advocacy initiatives come from that movement. We'd be proud to see your name on that list.
Thank you. Kenneth Landon, followed by Patrick Mousihi. Kenneth Landon, followed by Patrick Masiehi.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. To the average reader, the resolution for Measure B appears to be benign, innocuous, only to amend the city charter to eliminate perceived ambiguities, to be consistent with GAAP, to clarify existing language regarding fund transfers. The arguments for Measure B states that the measure does not affect utility rates. That is a bald-faced lie. The council's own independent auditors, on December the 11th, 2012, at a council meeting, stated that the transfer from the surplus fund did not violate GAAP. Charter B would legalize rating the utility before the utility's existing needs are met that would guarantee future utility rate increases or bond issuances. To amend the city charter would eliminate several critical funds accounts that the council considers obsolete. It eliminates the current prohibition against GWP receipts being credited to the general fund that pays for general appropriations. Although the charter only authorizes GWP surplus monies to be transferred for other than GWP needs, the council has illegally been transferring twenty-five percent of GWP's revenues to the general fund. Now you want to legalize it with ambiguous resolution language. The council has been using GWP's utility funds as its own slush fund for the past twelve years, transferring over $245 million from GWP revenue to the general fund. GWP's infrastructure is in dire need of capital improvement. About $21 million a year has been in receipts or being transferred annually to subsidize general services. GWP no longer has adequate funds to pay for its capital improvements without rate increases or capital improvement. If the council would do its job, there would be no need to siphon twenty-five percent of GWP's revenue. The council should concentrate on pension reform affecting current employees, not future hires. Specifically, pensions, biking, and COLAs. The state realized, the state of California realized back in the 1970s that it had a problem when certain employees were doing that, and they rescinded it immediately. It affected all current employees that had not retired. The state realized, so also, I'll give you an example. A safety officer with 1,000 hours, this is about a half a year's pay, can increase their or spike their pension fifty percent. I don't know whether or not you were aware of that. And no contributions. Further, with automatic COLAs, safety officers starting at over $100,000, let's say assume a five percent annual COLA for safety officers, if they started, let's say, $135,000, after ten years, it would be over $200,000. After thirty years, it would grow to over $200,000. And after thirty years, being age eighty, if they retired at fifty, it would be over How will the council be able to pay for that? It was never intended for public sector employees to be able to retire at substantially more than what they were earning when they were active. The only way you can do it is stop the bleeding and do what's right. Take action now. Thank you.
Patrick Masiehi, followed by Herbert Milano.
Mayor Frank Quintero, members of city council. My name is Patrick Massey. I'm a Glendale resident. I'm here tonight to read a letter that I wrote to the Glendale news press. It did not get published. As a result, I'm compelled to come in front of you and read this letter. Mr. Frank Quintero, you've served the city for twelve years with pride and ethics, and I personally wanted to come here and thank you for that. And this is the letter that I wrote to the Glendale news press. Referring to the article, "List of Candidates in Glendale Municipal Election Firms Up from 1/30/2013," Mayor Frank Quintero's decision not to run for another term on the Glendale City Council is disheartening. Frank Quintero served the Glendale community very well with pride and dedication to the entire community for the past twelve years. Indeed, he was not afraid to stand against the status quo and vote with the people of Glendale rather than to serve the special interest groups. Frank Quintero was known to stand against rubber stamping the reports and demands of staff on numerous occasions to protect the Glendale public's interests. He voted against utility rate increases numerous times and also voted against the $5.9 million Flower-Adgrave train crossing. Frank Quintero was a champion of parks and open space. He was not afraid to speak against projects that he believed would destroy the quality of life for single-family neighborhoods. Frank Quintero truly lived up to the campaign motto, protecting the neighborhoods. And Mayor Quintero, thank you for serving the city of Glendale for the past twelve years, again, with pride and ethics. In conclusion, I'd like to say that you were the only council member about six years ago that stood with two commissioners that exercised their freedom of speech and freedom of choice on both sides of the issue of train crossings. One was for it, one was against it, and I will never forget that personally. Thank you very much, sir.
Herbert Milano, followed by Bill Wiseman.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Well, I had a presentation to make with regard to the elections, and I may still have some time, but after hearing this presentation by Mr. Masiehi, it comes to mind that I don't share his opinion about you, Mr. Quintero, not at all.
What a surprise.
And I'll tell you why it's not a surprise. You know, in many instances, because people tend to see the problems or see the world from the steeple of their village church. You know, from time to time, you know, a councilman will do the right thing for the right reasons. And if it is close to the heart of someone's neighborhood, then, of course, it resonates, and they tend to ignore everything else. And that's perhaps one of the reasons why I still advocate councilmatic districts, because after all, we still need to pay attention to the needs of all the neighborhoods, not just the issues that pertain to your own neighborhood. In 2002, I participated as a board member of a new organization funded by the president of the University of California called the Academic Centers for Excellence. It was performed, it was facilitated by the Glendale Presbyterian Church, where I was a member. And the training was pretty extensive. The idea was to ensure that families of low income and who had no history of going to college had an opportunity to envision themselves and the kids going to college. So Mr. Quintero was a member, I was a member. He came to the original membership meeting, never showed up again until inauguration several months later. When funding was needed for that, he never showed up for that. We got funding for one year, a very small amount, $1,000, and nothing else happened. But still, I believed in you, Mr. Quintero, because you were the ones who advocated that we moved the city meetings to the evening where people could actually engage the city council. You advocated to have employees at least work some Fridays as opposed to having all the Fridays off. I thought that was pretty powerful. You stood up against Rick Caruso. I thought that was also pretty good. So, you know, it's a mixed bag. You showed courage in many cases, but something happens along the way when you're sitting in the city council for so many years that after a while, your head gets big, that somehow you figure that everybody is, you know, kissing up to you, that you begin to believe what the people tell you, that you're so great, you're so good, and so forth. And so you become, after a while, dismissive. You become, you know, you respond to the public in a way that is not conducive to the type of government that we want to have, that when we come in to say something that is, that challenges what you've said in public, that all of a sudden, we become your enemy and we become, you know, and you begin to react to us in a very negative way. Look, we speak words about the issues that we see. We simply expect some type of accountability or response back that is commensurate with the tone which we give it to you. And sometimes it is harsh, you know, and sometimes it may appear bitter. But, you know, I came to think about people that speak in protest, and Latin America has a big history of that, the protest song. And we had it as well, you know, Woody Guthrie, the "This land is my land" and so forth. That was a protest song. "This land is your land," it's like, "It's our land." And it's a protest song. We had, in Latin America, I don't know if you know the protest singers from Argentina, like Mauricio Cabral. They speak about the injustices that generally government imposes or the military imposes and so on, injustices. He was assassinated two years ago. In Turkey, in Armenia, we had Heran Dink, right? He was assassinated in 2007, publisher of a magazine and assassinated by a seventeen-year-old. When people speak truth to power, those individuals in power who feel that they have all of a sudden the knowledge and the prerogative and so forth, all of a sudden wind up dismissing the public. And that's what's wrong, Mr. Quintero, and that's what has changed in you. You've changed. Back in 2005, when you ran for office, you called Mr. Paul Krikorian terrorists. You know, why? Why go to the extent of having such a desire to hold a position that you basically disrespect the people that come before you? You know, that's what I see, and that's what I would like to change. So I come here and test and ask and ask for transparency and ask for some decency back, and that's what people want. Fair taxes, productive individuals, you know, and a responsive government. Thanks.
Bill Wiseman, followed by Harry Zavos.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman from far north Glendale. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I changed my mind after hearing Councilman Menuchyan talk about the Experimental Forest, and I want to thank him for mentioning that because the Experimental Forest is one of the most unique and interesting places in the city of Glendale. It's kind of hard to get to, so unless you're prepared to hike or bike about at least five miles to get up there, either from the Brown Park side or from the La Tuna Canyon side, it's quite an effort to get up there, but it is a very unique place. And the portion of the forest that burned, that happened in the Harvard Fire of 2005. I think it was late September of 2005, and that was the fire that started behind Castaways Restaurant and the DeBel Golf Course on the Burbank side. And it burned up and over the ridge and came down a little bit onto the north-facing slopes of the Verdugo Hills. And it was during that time that the one portion of the Experimental Forest did get burned. And I remember it quite well because I have a very good view of that spot from my backyard. And I remember we applauded when the super-scooper aircraft came over the top of the ridge and helped put that fire out. What I really wanted to talk about with regard to that portion of the forest that did get burned is that the city of Glendale Community Service and Parks Department has, every year since that fire, especially during the summers, have sponsored group outings to the Experimental Forest where colter pines have been planted and subsequent expeditions have gone up to either plant more trees or water the existing trees. And I've been fortunate enough to participate in a number of those activities since 2005. Pretty much every summer, the city has sponsored groups to go up and maintain the trees. And it's kind of a challenging environment because some of the slopes are pretty steep. And the fire burned down into a little canyon that's sort of the very top of the Experimental Forest. And right afterwards, it was really devastated. It looked really bad. But in the years since, things have been coming back, and a lot of the colter pines that the city helped plant up there are thriving. Not all of them made it. You have to kind of get a baby pine tree into the right spot. Sometimes they like where they are and sometimes they don't. But if you go up to that area now, and I expect, you know, there's probably going to be more outings coming this summer because it's important that those trees get watered during the hot weather. A lot of those little seedling trees are now four, five feet tall. They're already putting out cones. And the little canyon where the fire did come in is looking very, not back to where it was before, but it's looking much, much better and it's much more thickly vegetated. And so I'd like to encourage anyone who's interested in going up to take a look. What they often do is have a caravan of four-wheel-drive vehicles that come up from the La Tuna Canyon side. And I typically load up the back of my truck with as many gallons of water as I can put in there. And we actually leave water up there for the mountain bikers because they water the trees when we're not there during other times of the year. And so I would maybe just keep an eye on the city's website and look for an announcement for one of those activities. I highly recommend it if you want to see what is really a very unique and unusual area. And since I've got a little bit of time left on a completely different subject, I just wanted to announce briefly that the Crescenta Valley Community Association will be holding a candidate forum for candidates for a city council. That's going to be February 28th from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Los Angeles County Library, La Crescenta Branch, at the corner of Foothill and La Crescenta. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, my name is Harry Zavos. I've had a long and abiding interest in how GWP monies are spent. So, consistent with the requirements of the city's ordinance, I submitted a request to write the against argument on Measure B. The only other request was made by Vanguardians, and Vanguardians was duly appointed to write that argument. Subsequently, I discovered from the city clerk's office that the city council hadn't made no such request to write the in-favor argument. But nevertheless, they proceeded to appoint themselves to do so in spite of the fact that the ordinance clearly says that the appointments can only be made among those who have filed such a request. I brought that to the city clerk's attention, indicated the appointment violated the ordinance and was illegal, and consequently, that argument could not go on the ballot. The city attorney's office informed the city clerk that he should overlook those violations of the ordinance because the ordinance was designed to inform the public. And if he didn't overlook those violations, then there would be no argument in favor of Measure B on the ballot. Now, that's not an accepted legal principle. I know of no court that has said that you can ignore legal requirements of an ordinance if failing to do so would mean an argument for or against a measure will not be on the ballot. Indeed, if you followed that principle, all requirements with respect to time limits and qualifications would be swept aside. In any event, that to enforce those requirements would mean a particular argument would not be on the ballot. Now, that decision has to be made by the clerk, and I don't want to rehash that tonight. But what I want to do is point out that when Vanguardians found out that there were only two requests to write the against argument, they inquired of the city attorney whether or not, if they stepped aside, I could write that argument. And I made the same inquiry, and I think it was on January 23rd, I was informed that if Vanguard stepped aside, there would be no against argument on the ballot. So much for that principle. So much for that principle that informing the public overrides all other legal considerations. But while the city council could determine who they would appoint to be responsible for and be the authors of that argument, they could not control Vanguardian reaching out and having somebody help them with the drafting. And that's precisely what they did. They asked me if I would draft the argument. I did. I presented it to them. They did some tweaks, which I found not objectionable. And then, consistent with the ordinance, they submitted it with the name of two other officers. That's what the ordinance requires. It doesn't prohibit any other signatures from appearing. So I guess in the interest of informing the public, they had me sign that argument under the following words, drafted by Harry Zavos, professor of law emeritus, for and under the direction of Vanguardians. I've been told by the city clerk that the city attorney's office has taken the position that that cannot appear on the ballot. The only reason for it not to appear on the ballot is to withhold from the public the fact that the argument was drafted by somebody who's had long acquaintance with the issues. So much for the principle that informing the public overrides all other legal considerations. You'll forgive me if I say that this has led me to complete, to the conclusion that the principle that informing the public trumps all other legal considerations is not a principle at all, but it's a cynical ploy to be used or ignored as it's convenient.
Zanku Armenian, final card.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council and staff, before I get started, I've asked the clerk to bring up a document. My name is Zanku Armenian. I'm on the board of the Rossmoyn Homeowners Association. I'm also chair of the Action Committee. I'm here today to speak to you about the coming gun show that's coming, at least potentially the last one, depending on how you vote later on this month on an ordinance. But we do have a gun show that's in front of us first weekend of March. And I have concerns about this contract and the gun show in general because of what we've been seeing in the news in terms of gun shows really having exponentially more attendance than normal because of the overall gun show debate in the nation. I'm not a lawyer, but I know enough to tell the difference between a good agreement and a bad agreement, and this is a very, very sloppy agreement, in my opinion. There are, actually, for me, it does not meet the standards I would expect from our city, and I'm sure it does not meet the standards of the quite capable staff we have in the city attorney's office. So I question whether or not and how much review this document ever got. Starting with the front section, which is the notes section of the agreement, it says in here, "Unless he is responsible for cleanup, auditorium, and adjacent areas," is what it cites. There's no definition of what adjacent areas is. I'm here to express concern from our neighborhood because, given the parking situation, I have a feeling, if you look at the attendance numbers of the more recent gun shows, we're probably going to get much more cars coming through, and they're going to end up starting to park in the Rossmoyn neighborhood and the Royal Canyon neighborhood. And so the cleanup is an issue for me. Next, if you go down to number thirteen, if we can go to the next page, Mr. Clark, next page, number thirteen. So thirteen talks about all drinks must be poured and served in cups only, no drinking allowed from glass bottles. This implies that there will be alcohol served, and from what I understand, alcohol is served at this show. But at the same time, the gun show promoter says children under fourteen free admission on their website. So I wonder what sort of steps are being taken since alcohol is being served and minors are in attendance at this show. Any other establishment that serves alcohol usually restricts the attendance of minors. And there's nothing in here that talks about children under fourteen need to be accompanied by a parent or guardian or any such language, which is a shortcoming, in my opinion. If we go to number forty on the next page, so this is baffling. Here, it talks about, number forty starts to talk about signs. And when you read it, it says, "Unless he's, unless he, his officers, agents, employees, and representatives will not post, paint, print, nail, tack, erect, place, fasten, maintain, or otherwise affix one or more," colon. And then if you go to the next clause on the next page, has nothing to do with that. There is nothing after the "more." I'm only assuming that number forty-two, which later on goes on to talk about signs, is actually referring to number forty as the continuation of number forty where there's all sorts of restrictions on signage. But again, you know, there are a lot of issues in here, and I wonder how it's going to be, how the signage issue will be enforced. Finally, on the issue of security, which if you go back to number eighteen, clause number eighteen, is that security will be provided. On one hand, on the notes section, it says all night, starting March 1st. But then if you go into the contract on number eighteen, it says one hour before the event. And other shows, if there are any indication, there are lines starting to form well before the show. So what kind of security? And then on top of that, it says the security in the notes section will be provided by LAPD off-duty. I don't understand why Glendale PD aren't the ones providing security in our own neighborhoods. In conclusion, what I'd like to request from the city council is, one, and staff, is that there be a thorough project plan on this because this is not a normal event as a gun show, but especially this year and this time around, given the additional interest in gun shows. I think we should expect a much larger attendance because I have no doubt that the NRA will turn this into a popularity contest as they have with other shows. And I'd like to be able to report to my board that there's a project plan. So I'd like to request that staff share with the neighborhood HOAs what that project plan is on managing this situation prior to the event. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, that was the final card. Ms. Manoukian.
Is alcohol being served at the gun show? Is that correct?
No.
There's alcohol being served?
I don't know that.
I wasn't aware of that.
I don't think so.
I don't believe there is.
I don't believe there is.
Understanding that the agreement in question is a boilerplate agreement for the rental of the civic auditorium. As you know from last week's discussion, an operation place or operation plan is being put together, is almost completed between police, fire, and public works. So all of that is happening as we speak.
Can we share that with the homeowners association so that they know what the plans are and they understand, so that they feel comfortable that they're not going to be negatively impacted by the show?
Generally, yes. Some elements, obviously, we won't, but the majority of it, I'm sure we can.
Over the years, there's been many very large events there. So the police, fire, and public works are very well tuned of how to handle that kind of crowd. It's nothing new.
I'd like to know as well as to what all of the plans are.
Certainly.
Well, yeah, I think it's a fact that the neighbors, especially the close neighbors there in Rossmoyn and at the entrance to Royal Boulevard, they have reason to be concerned if there is a huge turnout. And this is a regional draw without a doubt, as we know, Orange County, you know, further out. So this is a big regional draw. It's going to draw a lot of people. I'm convinced of that, and I'm sure they're going to advertise it, probably be TV coverage. So we need to prepare and have a plan and let some of the homeowner groups know what we have in mind. Not everything, since I'm sure there's a lot of security things that the police will be working on that we don't really want to tip anyone off. Before I give my opinions on Mr. Milano, any other comments?
Yeah, I would like to ask the city attorney to comment on Mr. Zavos's comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Friedman, Mr. Mayor, members of council. With all respect, Mr. Zavos misrepresented the opinion that we provided to Mr. Kusaki, and that opinion is available. Our opinion does not in any way state that informing the public trumps all other considerations. What I said was that when you're looking at these particular statutory provisions, you have to keep in mind that informing the public is one of the overall overarching considerations for these provisions. Our past practice, we have never required individual council members, a majority of council members, to submit in advance that they want to write the argument. The whole purpose of those provisions is so that the council, who makes the appointment, knows who is going to be requesting to write an in-favor or against argument. With that, there's no, there's no essential purpose required for council members to submit in advance a request to write the argument. With respect to the argument against by Vanguardians, it was Vanguardians' choice to submit a request to write that argument. And they, we certainly know that Mr. Allen and Mr. Zavos read our agendas meticulously, knew that those items were on the agenda. At any time, Mr. Allen could have made the request to withdraw prior to the council making that selection. He did not. He was not here. Mr. Zavos was not here. As a result, the council really had no choice but to submit to appoint Vanguardians as the bona fide Citizens Association to write that argument. So it would not have been an action of the city that resulted in an argument in favor not being submitted on that argument. It would have been, it would have been an action of Vanguardians if they chose not to submit the argument. With respect to the signatories of Vanguard's argument, again, the entity that was appointed to write the argument against Measure B pursuant to our code was Vanguardians. The code requires that two officers sign that on behalf of Vanguardians. It is not a opportunity for others not, that do not have that particular title, to sign on to an argument. And again, given the fact that Mr. Zavos had made the request to write the argument against Measure B, to me, it seems like it would have been a backdoor attempt to get him, get his signature on that particular thing. And I think our statutory scheme is drafted in such a way to protect against those types of machinations. That'll answer any questions by the council.
And it's worth noting that it was the city council that put those matters onto the agenda, which would only make sense particularly considering past practice, the manner in which the arguments in favor would be provided. Once again, a matter of form over substance.
Else?
Okay, yeah, I'm going to go right ahead. Well, let me start by saying I don't think I'm dismissive of anyone. In all of these twelve years that has come to that podium, quite the opposite. And Mr. Milano talks about the public, so he uses himself and the public sort of interchangeably, like it's all the same. No, it's not the same. It's not the same at all. This guy, and I won't call him a gentleman because he's not, this guy, his entire act all of these years is basically distortions of fact and data. And that's what he does best. He has worked in the software industry and the computer world for many years, and he's very good at data and so forth. The problem is, it's always a distortion. It's never the same, the way it should be presented. And then outright lies, because he does lie. It comes off his tongue without any problem at all. He throws my name out, independent expenditures that I had nothing to do with, my campaign nothing to do with. He knows that, but he throws it out anyway. And what I've also noticed about him is that he likes to say anything that comes to mind. He's attacked each and every one of us on this dais numerous times, attacks of staff and so forth. But what he can't do is handle any challenge. Whenever you challenge him, he bristles at the very idea that you had something to say. And he's done that time after time. The only time, or the first time that I really met him and got to know him, although I did know his mom quite well years ago, was when he stood on that podium. And he was here because he was an apartment owner, and he was totally upset about rent control, the idea of rent control. That was the first time he came to the podium, and he never left. I never saw him at a nonprofit, the Glendale Youth Alliance, all the different veterans groups that I've served on, the Glendale Hispanic. These are either groups that I started or have served on for years, and just so many nonprofits, I don't even want to name him. I've never seen him at any endeavor having to do with the general public good and trying to move an agenda forward to try to help the city of Glendale. He's here constantly. He's cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that is no exaggeration. He teamed up with two Los Angeles-area developers to sue the city of Glendale in addition to the hundreds of thousands that I'm sure we've spent in staff time with the endless public records, all in the name of transparency, transparencies. He's run for city council in loss. As I mentioned in the past, I'm glad he's running again. He's sure to fail, but believe me, he'll be back. This is his avocation. He's moved back to the city of Glendale, rented an apartment. So he's back among us. Well, he never really left. And this is part of the public process. You have to listen to everything that he says. But, in my opinion, they're distortions, and that's been true for a long, long time.
Any other comments?
Remember, he sued me for a million dollars, because I wouldn't let him come back and rebut what we said.
Well, he, you know, he says he's a member of the public, but in my opinion, the members of the public that have come to this podium always get plenty of attention from all the city council members as well as the staff. Any other comments?
You have two items that may be busy.
I move that the council hereby authorize the city attorney to enter into a retaining agreement with the law offices of Burke, Williamson, Sorensen, LLP, Manuela, Albuquerque, to advise and assist the city attorney on a matter. In addition to other provisions, the retaining agreement must contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manoukian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, Mr. Jarian.
Now I move we adjourn.
No. No, we have one more item.
I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized, along with the city's contract litigation counsel, to appeal the judgment of the Superior Court in the matter of City of Glendale versus Marcus Cable Associates LLC DBA Charter Communications, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number EC-051903.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manoukian.
I did not participate in these deliberations. I will abstain from this call.
Jarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Quintero.
Yes.
Anymore?
No.
If there's no more new business, I move we adjourn. Second. We are adjourned.
Sir, second.
Second.